Good evening, I'd like to open up the council meeting of Wednesday, August 10, 2016. Councilmember Chapman, Councilmember Clayton, Councilmember Kendall, Deputy Mayor Quinn, Mayor Moore. Would everybody please rise for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection? Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, adequate notice that this meeting has been provided in a following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Post and the Star Ledger on January 6, 2016, and posted on Bolton Board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. Matters from the city council?
I'm going to do an ECTU on my different [inaudible].
Yeah, I'd just like to let everyone know that Monday night, on the 15th, we are having our first Sunset Lake Commission meeting here in council chambers at 7:00. So if anyone is interested, it's open to the public, we'd love to have your help.
I'm just going to take it down because I made on Monday evening. On Friday evening, the 12th, there will be a community prayer ritual at the Springwood Avenue Park beginning at 6:00, and everyone is invited, and we would like you to come. And on July 28, the city was awarded two grants totaling $19.1 million. One was for the demolition and rebuilding of Boston Way, and the second was for the building of Renaissance Village, both on Springwood Avenue and Park.
AP-TV is hosting a editing workshop. It's free, run by the volunteers on the AP-TV Commission. It's April 23rd, 6:30 to 8:00. So what we'll be doing is teaching you how to shoot, but less on how to shoot and more on how to edit the software into a short movie and upload it on YouTube. So if anyone is interested in that, AP-TV's doing a free seminar on editing videos on August 23rd at 6:30.
My numbers are going to be a little bit off on this, but I would say from this past spring to summer, there's been about 10 mixed businesses that's open, and I was so busy today, I forgot to make a list of them. I'll give some handouts, but I'll have this at the next meeting. And my point for saying this is we want to keep every business that we can in town, and they need support. A lot of them, like I see one person at a candy store and a cigar store, and it's a different restaurants that's open. If you know about these that are just opening, give them your support, and I'll have a list for you at the next meeting. There's another thing I want to talk about is, I would say about the last three or four days, I've been contacted by numerous people asking when will APP air the opening of the park, and it was one more, there was, oh, the recreation. And the reason these people ask me this, because they would like to tape it and send it to their people, they're very proud of the Springwood Avenue Park, and they would like to just take it off, tape it off the television or whatever the way that they're going to go about it, and send it to out-of-town family members that used to be in Asbury. Thank you.
I think the park is done and edited, and I think it's up on our website. It takes longer to put it up on the TV. It's a process. You just did the park, didn't you? Okay, not the rec event. Okay, so the park is up on the website. It'll be on the TV Sunday night, because we do programming on Sunday, but the rec event isn't edited yet.
All right, thank you.
Matters from the city manager?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On Saturday, July 30, Brian Shripk of I-STAR provided the Asbury Park Homeowners Association an update in regards to waterfront redevelopment. Since that meeting, all the local papers have written about it, and the governing body and I have received numerous inquiries and comments that were said during the presentation. "We want to do things with the plan amendment that makes sense for the community," Brian is quoted as saying. "I need the community to know that we are trying to move forward, trying to move them forward, and we need your help." On March 21st of this year, Brian was provided a draft copy of the city's amendments to the plan. The city and I-STAR were scheduled to meet on Tuesday, July 26, to discuss these amendments. This meeting was canceled on Monday, the day before, by Brian because he did not like certain language. I personally spoke to Brian and his attorney, saying there were more to the amendments than just one item, but we should, at a minimum, still meet to discuss other issues such as lot-by-lot development, uses, parking, and circulation. But Brian refused to meet until the language was changed. Four months, Brian had the proposed amendment language, and it only became an issue immediately before we were scheduled to meet. To get I-STAR back at the negotiating table, the city acquiesced and changed the language so a formal negotiation took place. Yesterday, I can report, all sides met with the goal of restarting the amendment process of both the waterfront plan and the master's developers agreement. Brian mentioned during the homeowners association meeting that local labor cannot meet the insurance requirements to perform construction work. Why not lessen these requirements to provide more opportunities for local labor? Also discussed was that Bradley Cove is directly linked to the moving of the sewer treatment plant, but this cannot and will not be a decision that is made in a vacuum. The city will continue to work to ensure Bradley Cove is preserved as open space. Out of everything that was discussed on July 30, the comments in regard to 1101 Ocean were the most troublesome to me. It was stated that the city had received an application package for the project in May, but a word was missing. That word was completed. The statement could have been, "The city received a completed application package for 1101 a few weeks ago," but that is not the case. Our financial advisors are still waiting for some information. What was the second most troublesome statement? Brian discussed that the city had not approved a storage facility. I had no idea what this was concerning, as in the last nine months, no one has ever mentioned it to me. When I inquired to Brian about it, stating that the mayor said the city did approve it, Brian responded that it was actually stuck with the attorneys, and the city did indeed approve the facility. This obviously begs the question, how important is this, that for nine months no one mentioned it? This lack of communication or moving of priority projects ensures that only one thing occurs: unrealistic expectations of the continued and future development of the city. I-STAR, as a developer, is in the business to make money. The city governing body members and staff look at the city as a whole. The political silly season is upon us. Individual and organizations will begin to push their singular focus agendas harder than ever, exactly as Brian's presentation was meant to push the waterfront redevelopment activities. Additionally, we've already seen some self-serving letters to the editors appear in local papers, and regretfully, more will come. But there was something that Brian said that is very true and must not be forgotten. They dropped the tagline "Asbury Park Waterfront" to just "Asbury Park." Why? Because they realize the city as a whole benefits from redevelopment and not just the waterfront, and the lesson that the city be viewed as a whole must not be forgotten. With that, I'd also like to give an update on the transportation project, the road repaving program. As many of you have seen in the papers, just today, Senate President Sweeney said he did not expect any fruition of the transportation trust fund issue to be resolved until November. This holds up our program, the approximate $3.8 million road repaving, the first time it's been done in six years. $800,000, $900,000 of that is actually DOT money. So right now, the road program is on hold, and today I spoke to the city engineer and want to report to the city council, the mayor and city council, that the lowest bidders have responded that they will agree to an extension. So hopefully, this can get done sooner than later, so we can actually start paving some roads and fixing some sewer infrastructure. But right now, if we have to go another 30 or 60 days, we will change that recommendation and reject the awards due to funding, and move till next year when we can add Fourth Avenue. But at this point in time, we're just in a hold pattern. Additionally, and lastly, there's still been no movement on transitional aid, and we have no idea when a budget's going to be passed. Thank you.
Matters by the city attorney?
Yes, I'd like to take a few moments to report out on the issue of the initiative and referendum petitions that were previously submitted to the city, since there has been some discussion about this issue at recent council meetings. Specifically, on January 12, 2016, the city clerk received initiative petitions to place five questions on the November 8, 2016, general municipal election ballot. The petitions were submitted by a committee composed of James Famalero, Derek Grant, Daryl Hamery, Mabon Wambel, and Felicia Simmons. These petitions were submitted pursuant to the initiative and referendum provisions contained as part of the city's new Faulkner Act form of government. The petitions involved the following five subjects. The first was a referendum petition protesting ordinance number 2015-53 relating to the salary range for the deputy municipal manager position as passed on December 23, 2015. The second was an initiative petition proposing an ordinance to create a citizen police review board. The third was an initiative petition proposing an ordinance relating to the issue of club liquor licenses. The fourth was an initiative petition proposing an ordinance to establish a minimum wage for seasonal, temporary, or part-time employees. And the fifth was an initiative petition proposing an ordinance to mandate a residency requirement for all officers and employees of the city, including police and fire department employees. These were essentially the same five petitions that previously had been submitted by several of the same petitioners in August of 2015. The petitions were initially rejected back then because the city clerk determined that there were an insufficient number of valid signatures identified for each of the proposed questions, and the fact that they were not submitted in a timely manner in order for the questions to be included on the November 2015 ballot. A statement to that effect was read into the record in public by the city clerk on September 8, 2015, and the petitioners took no further action at that time. In any event, when the petitions were resubmitted in January of 2016, the city clerk once again performed her due diligence concerning the validity of the petitions. This due diligence was undertaken with assistance of my office as city attorney. Within the statutorily required 20-day period following the filing of the petitions, the city clerk communicated with the petitioners in writing to advise that all of the petitions were again being rejected. However, this time, the rejection was premised upon substantive defects. In particular, based upon existing statutory and case law, each proposed question was determined to be legally defective for one reason or another, and it was therefore not permissible to move the questions forward for consideration by the council or by the voters if the council failed to act. Once again, a statement itemizing the petitions received and the determination made by the city clerk was read into the record by the city clerk on February 10, 2016. This process was by no means swept under the carpet by the city. There was full public disclosure at open public council meetings. Thereafter, honor about May 2, 2016, the petitioners filed a lawsuit in the Superior Court contesting the city's actions in rejecting the petitions for the second time around. The action named the city and the city clerk as defendants. In response, and in lieu of filing an answer, my firm filed a motion for summary judgment on behalf of the defendants, seeking to have the lawsuit dismissed with prejudice on various legal grounds. Thereafter, and prior to the hearing on that motion, the petitioner's attorney agreed to execute and file a stipulation of dismissal with prejudice and without costs in this matter. As of July 27, 2016, that stipulation of dismissal with prejudice has now been entered and filed by the court. As such, the litigation is now dismissed. I bring this up as I wish to set the record straight as to what transpired relating to the initiative and referendum petitions, since this issue had been raised at recent council meetings. Obviously, there was public expense involved in providing legal advice and in defending the city's actions in these matters, neither of which was ultimately pursued by the petitioners. In addition, at least one of the petitioners was also involved in a proposed recall effort relating to Councilman Kendall. After gaining initial approval in February of 2016 for the form of the petitions to be used for the recall effort, the petitioners never submitted any actual petitions with signatures prior to the August 3 deadline date, in order for the recall question to be placed on this November's ballot. Again, there was public expense involved at the city's end with regard to a campaign that ended up going nowhere. That's it.
Have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it.
All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. I need derogatory abuse and for threatening statements. Will not be permitted. The chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order, and after appropriate warning, may terminate any further comments from the speaker. Each speaker is asked to place your name and address on the record, and you have three minutes per speaker to speak.
Catherine Penna, 1201 Main Street and 4th Avenue, Asbury Park. Resolution 215, 2015, 358, establishing and adopting a complete streets policy for the city of Asbury Park. Whereas, a complete street is designed, defined as a means to provide safe access for all users by designing and operating a comprehensive, integrated, connected, multimodal network of transportation options. And whereas, the benefits of complete streets include improving safety for pedestrians, bicyclists, children, older citizens, non-drivers, and the mobility challenged as well as those that cannot afford a car or choose to live car-free, providing connections to bicycling and walking trip generators such as employment, education, residential, recreation, retail centers, and public facilities, promoting healthy lifestyles, creating more livable communities, reducing traffic congestion, and reliance on carbon fuels thereby reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and saving money by incorporating sidewalks, bike lanes, safe crossings, and transit amenities into the initial design of a project, thus sparing the expense of retrofits later. And whereas, the Asbury Park mayor and municipal council wishes to implement a complete streets policy through the planning, design, construction, maintenance, and operation of new and retrofit transportation facilities, enabling safe access and mobility of pedestrians, bicyclists, transit users of all ages and abilities. And whereas, it is the intent of the Board of Chosen Freeholders that, to the extent practicable, the Asbury Park Complete Streets Policy shall include all road, bridge, and building projects in the municipality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Donna Harrison, 604 4th Avenue and 1006 Main Street. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the mayor and municipal council adopts the following complete streets policy with the following goals and objectives. One, create a comprehensive, integrated, connected, multimodal network by facilitating connections to bicycling and walking trip generators such as employment, education, residential, recreational, and public facilities, as well as retail and transit centers. Two, provide safe and accessible accommodations for existing and future pedestrian, bicycle, and transit facilities. Three, establish a checklist of pedestrian, bicycle, and transit accommodations such as accessible sidewalk curb ramps, crosswalks, countdown pedestrian signals, signs, curb extensions, pedestrian scale lighting, bike lanes, and shoulders for consideration in each project where county jurisdiction applies. Four, establishment of a procedure to evaluate resurfacing projects for complete streets inclusion according to the length of the project and local support, environmental constraints, right-of-way limitations, funding resources, and bicycle and/or pedestrian compatibility. Five, transportation facilities constructed for long-term use shall anticipate likely future demand for bicycling and walking facilities and not preclude the provision of future improvements. Six, designs shall address the need for bicyclists and pedestrians to cross corridors as well as travel along them in a safe, accessible, and convenient manner. Therefore, the design of intersections, interchanges, and bridges shall anticipate use by bicyclists and pedestrians. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea Leonard, 1205 Comstock Street. Number seven, bicycle and pedestrian facilities shall be designed and constructed to the best currently available standards and practices, including the New Jersey Roadway Design Manual, the AASHTO Guide for the Development of Bicycle Facilities, AASHTO's Guide for the Planning, Design, and Operation of Pedestrian Facilities, the Manual of Uniform Traffic Controlled Devices, and others as related. Eight, provisions shall be made for pedestrians and bicyclists when closing roads, bridges, or sidewalks for construction projects as outlined in NJ DOT Policy Number 705, Accommodating Pedestrian and Bicycle Traffic During Construction. Number nine, improvements shall also consider connections for safe routes to schools, safe routes to transit, transit villages, trail crossings, and areas or population groups with limited transportation options. Ten, improvements shall comply with the Title VII Environmental Justice, Americans with Disabilities Act, and complement the context of the surrounding community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Michael Kushner, 1105th Avenue. These are the exemptions to the Asbury Park's Complete Streets Policy, and they shall be presented for final decision to this mayor and council in writing and documented with supporting data that includes a reason for the decision or limited to the following: Non-motorized users are prohibited on the roadway. Scarcity of population travel in the tractors, both existing and future, indicate an absence of need for such accommodations. Detrimental environmental or social impacts outweigh the need for these accommodations. Cost of accommodations is excessively disproportionate to cost of project. The safety or timing of a project is compromised by the inclusion of the complete streets. An exemption other than those listed above must be documented with supporting data and must be approved by the mayor and council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Eric Gallopo, 908 5th Avenue. Be it further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution shall be sent to the Monmouth County Board of Chosen Freeholders and all departments and agencies having a responsibility for or connection with projects covered by the City of Asbury Park Complete Streets Policy. I, Cindy Dai, City Clerk of the City of Asbury Park, Monmouth County, New Jersey, do hereby certify the foregoing to be true, a true and exact copy of Resolution Number 2015-358, which was finally adopted by the city council at a meeting held on July 8, or on the 8th day of October 2015. Certified this 9th day of October 2015. Signed, Cindy Dai. Resolution 2015-358 has been read here verbatim by members of the Asbury Park Complete Streets Coalition, as adopted by the Asbury Park City Council on October 9, 2015. We will note the references to the county jurisdiction and the County Board of Chosen Freeholders in this resolution, adopting a complete street policy for the city of Asbury Park. We believe these references to be an error and should refer to city jurisdiction and the Asbury Park City Council. We also have several questions and requests. We respectfully request to know what concrete steps the city council has or will be taking to implement its adopted policy with respect to the inclusion of pedestrian, bicycle, and non-motorized transportation modes on our city streets. Second, we also respectfully request a progress report on the development of a plan for creating a comprehensive, integrated, connected, multimodal network as established by the resolution, and a progress report on the establishment of a transparent procedure to evaluate resurfacing projects for inclusion of complete streets. That includes public participation and comment. Thank you.
I'm not going to talk about that. Do you want to respond to it? No? Okay. Maureen Nevin, D-Lake Court. Thank you for turning the air conditioning back on. It's lovely. Michael, your statement tonight, is that going to be posted on the internet, on the web, so that we can see it?
Yeah, I have to clean it up a little bit. As I was reading it, there was, excuse me, some grammar issues, so next there, so it'll be up.
Yes, you're an example, you know, you must set an example. Okay, I'm going to just ask these questions, and then, you know, you can, okay. So this mention of Bradley Cove is directly linked to the movement of the sewer plant. I would like it if you could elaborate on that after my three minutes. I'm particularly interested in whether this is considered a, you know, sometimes you read reports that say that the Bradley Cove development is not going to be built because the I-STAR is going to get the land that the sewer plant is on now to develop as their waterfront development. So, and others say the reading is kind of unclear, and seems to be, seems to be saying that it has no effect on their building, the development called Bradley Cove. And then, of course, the confusion brought about by people calling that area of Asbury Park Bradley Cove, when there is no such thing as the Bradley Cove section of Asbury Park. So, okay, the other thing is, the transportation fund, so 4th Avenue is not going to be paved till, was that, I don't think I put a date down, but could you repeat that? And also, how does this affect D-Lake Drive? We were going to get our spaces painted, so pressing need there. I have questions about the bonds, but I'll wait for that to come up, right? That's going to be a public, another public portion. There's going to be another one for the bond issue, though, right? No? No, this is it?
Bond order, yes. Yes, there will be.
There will be.
Yes, it's public hearings, so there will be a public.
Thank you, Cindy.
The transportation fund is stymied and threatened. As Michael said, we're waiting for some notice so we can proceed, and if we can get contractors to guarantee their cost, the prices came in great for the city of Asbury Park. We have to go, have to bid again because the contracts were only good for 45 or 60 days, then we're going to be in trouble, but right now, we're trying to work that out. How does this affect D-Lake Drive? Not at all.
Not at all?
Not at all.
Okay, and how?
I think it's August 17th or August 18th is the 20th day after the second reading, the next day, the day before it's going to be posted, move your cars, it's going to be towed, the next day it's going to be striped and painted. So, nothing to D-Lake Drive.
So it's the 17th?
I may be off a date.
Give or take. They'll be signed, posted, we'll have something posted through next year. But yes, around that time, we're going to, that's just local, that's just us painting. That's nothing to do with the Transportation Trust Fund.
Right, yeah, okay, it's going ahead, that's great. And when is 4th Avenue now?
4th Avenue hasn't been designed yet. Next month, there'll be a resolution authorizing the award for T&amp;M to do the design of it. The goal was to do it next year, to finalize design, go out to bid. If nothing happens with Transportation Trust Fund, we're going to rebid everything as a big, large project. So 4th Avenue was scheduled for next year. So it's just wait and see right now, and that's what we can do. It's out of our hands.
And the Bradley Cove?
That's a little bit more complex. There's been some discussions out in the open of Bradley Cove trading for the sewer plant. We've seen that in the papers, people have talked about it. But the first step in all of this is to see if the sewer plant can actually be moved. So on tonight's agenda, excuse me, is a resolution authorizing me to sign an agreement with I-STAR, where I-STAR is fronting the money to do the study, to the first part, flow capacity and build-out study of the city. That's the first step to see if the sewer plant could even be moved. So we're taking this very, very slowly. I-STAR is paying for it, there's no cost to the taxpayers, they're asking for reimbursement later, which is fair, if the sewer plant can actually be moved. But this is going to be a three-to-five-year process. It's going to take time. The first part is the study, which we're entering into an agreement with I-STAR to do it tonight. So that's, this is the answer, is we don't know until something gets, until we know a study.
And there's no quid pro quo yet?
No, no. And as I said, one can't be looked in a vacuum, because you just don't know what's going to happen. It's going to take some time.
Thank you.
Pat Fasano, Grand Avenue, Asbury Park. I'm going to follow the complete street lead. They had five people for 15 minutes, I got three people for nine, but I can assure you, next council meeting, I'll bring five. So I want to clear up some timeline issues and some statements that were made. Here's an article, and then, Asbury Park paper, from July of 2016. Here's an article in the Asbury Park paper from July of 2012, okay? Waterfront eminent domain list slashed from 50 to 7. Well, were the 43 removed from the eminent domain list? I don't think so. Okay, so let's see what the city represented in 2012 because we know that Brian did not show up for the meeting last week, but let's see what was happening back in 2012, okay? "The proposed amendment to the WRA would allow property owners and developers alike to make additions and build new structures on individual lots," Sammet said. Sammet is currently drafting amendments, which should be before, be before the council for a vote in August of 2012, okay? So I know Brian didn't show up last week, but they did spend a lot of time doing planned amendments with Don Sammet. And now I understand that those amendments have been changed. So that's one point of view. The other point is, here's a land exchange agreement between myself and Asbury Partners that was approved by the City Council. When they said that we only need seven more properties, well, five were me and V and Vince Gifford. Five of the seven were me and... Then it was Angie, the Greek lady with the house behind the paint store, and the Karpinski's. Five were me and Vince Gifford. The bowling alley, the house next to the bowling alley, the house next to Porta, the lot next to Porta, one on Cookman Avenue, valuable property that I-STAR wanted. And when I made this agreement with I-STAR, representations were made to me in good faith, okay? And the representations that were made to me in 2013 were that I was going to have single lot development, and once I did this exchange, I would be able to build on my lots. So I made that exchange, and I gave the bowling alley up and other properties that were valuable to make the deal work with I-STAR, okay? Now, based on those assumptions, I had plans drawn. I had engineering work done on the block, and I had plans drawn at a big expense to me, okay? This is a building right across from the Britwood that I designed with an architect and an engineer, and I was all set to go to the planning board. And I never made it to the planning board because the planned amendment was very tight. Take out the other ones. Show them, okay? So this is costing me money and time. But what's even worse than that is costing the citizens of Asbury Park time and money. If you opened up these 50 lots for development for a single lot, there would be a boom in Asbury Park, a boom, because there's nothing like competition to get the ball rolling. Right now, you took a plan that you gave Caribetta and Vicaro in 1986, 30 years ago.
Hi, Patrick Fasano. I live on Grand Avenue as well. This is my first time. Hi, everybody. Yeah, basically, I work in the office with my dad. I moved down here about six years ago to learn more about real estate. Well, I never really got involved with the local government, so I guess this is my first, you know, step in the door. So maybe I'll see more of you again. I've got two minutes and 40 seconds. I'm doing great. I'm doing great. You know, and I learned a lot, but one thing that, you know, I'm recently learning is there's a lot of restrictions being put on people not named I-STAR in this city. And I feel like that's really not fair, you know, especially given the lack of progress and production that we've seen really over the last, you know, 30 years with different developers coming in. I mean, we built about 100... Well, you know, I wasn't here for most of it, but he's done about 176 condos in the City of Asbury Park over the last 20 years. They've all sold. I know I got my real estate license. I sold about 60 of them within the last three years. So if you open the door to people with, you know, that can actually do and build and make things happen for the city, I think everyone... He's right. Everyone would benefit from it. It would increase tax revenue. You'd be able to use that money to do anything you want. You can... Actually, to back up the people, I didn't know they were going to be talking about the bike lanes, but if you could really do that, that'd be amazing because it is actually really dangerous to bike in this city. I don't feel comfortable biking anywhere but Grand Avenue. But getting back to the point, I think, you know, the pace that we're going at is really nice to, you know, when we smile and we say we're working on it, but it would be really, really cool if we could actually, like, make sustainable progress at a rate that's not like... We're negotiating every three... Exactly, you know, because the whole town would benefit from... Like you read in your statement, he said development's good for Asbury Park. Well, when you have one company monopolizing the waterfront and basically hanging out all the individual landowners out to dry, that doesn't sound like development to me. That sounds more like one company specifically benefiting at the expense of other people and those people not really having a voice or any legal right to pursue any of their hopes, dreams, or aspirations, which, you know, they should be able to do that. Or crony capitalism, but I don't think we're allowed to say that. Sorry, sorry.
Look, no cross-conversations. You want to speak, you get up to the microphone.
Sorry, it's my first time. I didn't mean to engage in the public. It's just what I, you know, we've all, you know, are part of this city, not just a company named I-STAR. So it would be nice that, you know... Are they here?
No.
Oh, no? They're not here? Okay.
They're here.
They're listening? Okay. Yeah, check my phone. Yeah, I mean, I'd like to use the last 20 seconds, but I feel like I'm, you know, it's my first time. I was nervous, you know, I was a bit of a ramp. But I mean, you know, I think the point remains that, you know, it would be nice if this was taken a little more seriously than it seems from my perspective. I'm an outsider perspective. I don't want to get involved because it really looks like progress is not being made as far as helping individual landowners. That's good. Thank you.
Great job, Pat.
I'll be back.
You did well. You did very well.
Hey, thanks, Pat. Nice work, man. Peter Siegel, 7th Avenue. So I know why I-STAR would not support lot-by-lot development despite what Brian said publicly. I mean, he said publicly at the Homeowners Association meeting that he would support lot-by-lot development. I mean, I know why they wouldn't want to support it because it's certainly like shooting fish in a barrel for them right now. But I think Pat and Pat have significant points. What about those other 47 lots that were taken off that list? They're just sitting there collecting dust. I mean, come on. They're smart people with money, ready to go and build great product. You just saw renderings, but there's more. There's more than just Pat and their renderings. Councilmember Kendall said tonight, we have to support these local businesses, candy shops, and I mean, yeah, what about the businesses of the people that want to build real estate? They got to be supported. Where's the support? I mean, we heard Brian say last week specifically to my question. I was on that waterfront plan redevelopment committee several years ago. I was part of the process that created the suggestions and the recommendations that should be adopted, that were supposed to have been adopted. They still have not been adopted. I heard Brian say to my question last week, he supports lot-by-lot development. I heard the city manager say tonight that Brian said he supports discussing lot-by-lot development separately from these other things that he needs to have quid pro quo for. But he's open to talking about... Talk to him about lot-by-lot development. Who's doing it? Who's going to talk to him about lot-by-lot development? We've been asking for years. We did the work. We had a group and a study done, and hours and hours of my time at night. I mean, I was like, you know, rather stick needles in my eyes sometimes. But I went to these meetings and did it. I mean, a lot of people spent a lot of time on it. And it's good work, and it's a good plan, and they're good amendments. Who... What's next? Who's doing the follow-up? I mean, Don Sammet's plan was ready to go. And then he left, and a new person came in, and Brian didn't like the changes she made. And now I'm told that we're not allowed to Oprah those plans and look at them and pull them up and go back to the Sammet plan. I don't know why I'm not allowed to Oprah anything, but if anybody ever tells me I'm not allowed to Oprah anything, you're going to be talking to my lawyer in 10 seconds. So I don't know what that's about. But I'm going to find out. Who's talking to Brian about lot-by-lot? Who's going to do it? He said he wants it. He said he's open for it. He said he doesn't need it connected to 20 other things that he's got to get. So who's going to do it? Mayor, councilpeople, I ask you, who's going to do it? He says he's ready. Let's go. There's no reason not to do it.
When your three minutes are up, we'll respond. We don't cut you off during your three minutes.
I'd love to.
You're asking us for a response. We wait for your three minutes.
Would you please respond?
Sure.
Thank you.
So I'm going to say a couple of things. I wasn't at the homeowner meeting. In two... One, the advisory committee that met for the waterfront redevelopment was the backbone of the amendments. So I absolutely believe, having read not only the advisory committee but reading the amendments at the waterfront, that that advisory committee's recommendations are absolutely incorporated in the amendments. Here's the problem. So in July of 2014, Brian had a homeowner's meeting and said he wanted lot-by-lot development. In August of 2014, the council at the time directed the city manager to direct a letter to Brian saying, we support lot-by-lot development. We'll move on it tomorrow. Done. Let's take that out of the amendment process because there's some controversial sticking bones in the amendment process, one of which we all know is Bradley Cove. So we said, let's not... Don't hold up lot-by-lot. And I can forward you any letters you want, Peter. Don't hold up lot-by-lot because we want lot-by-lot, because we want ratables, because we want to get off transitional aid. Send him a letter. We support lot-by-lot. September of 2014, Brian sends us a letter and says, no, lot-by-lot. I don't support it. Then he has another homeowner's meeting where he says again, I support lot-by-lot.
July 25th, 2015.
He doesn't. So the consistency is he doesn't.
At Pat's Asbury Park Homeowners Association, almost a year to the date of this one. That meeting, the second one, was July 25th, 2015. Go back to AP-TV and look at it. Go ahead.
Okay, so we send him a resolution. He sends us a letter and says, no to lot-by-lot. I'm not doing lot-by-lot. The logic being something, I want to do all the amendments. We again say, there are sticking points with the amendments. Using as an easy example is Bradley Cove. So let's not make it the entire amendment process. Just do lot-by-lot because if we agree, if I-STAR and the city agrees on lot-by-lot, you can have lot-by-lot. That's all you need to have lot-by-lot. We agree on lot-by-lot. Brian doesn't agree on lot-by-lot. I don't care if he sings it from Convention Hall. He says no to lot-by-lot. We will vote on lot-by-lot on Wednesday and give it to you.
We'll vote it on tonight and give it to you.
You can have lot-by-lot. You're not going to get it unless he concedes. He's not going to concede.
I can understand why he wouldn't concede, going back to my shooting fish in a barrel comment.
Okay, and going back to some of your comments and some of Pat and Pat Juniors. Again, we sent them our draft version in March. We thought everything was fine. It took us months to schedule a meeting for July 26th, a Tuesday. We cleared the entire schedule from 8:00 a.m. to like whatever, to midnight. On the Monday before, the day before, he canceled. Why? We don't know. And then on the 30th, he goes down to the Homeowners Association and says, I'm for it. They won't meet. You put two and two together. We're staying right up here to now. You've got five people to sign off on lot-by-lot tomorrow. So as much as he said, and with those little diagrams, go to council meetings and beat them up. Maybe you should have another Homeowners Association meeting and beat him up as far as like, hey, we went to the council meeting like you said, and they said they'll sign off today, and we will sign off today.
And we signed off in 2014. I mean, Peter, why wouldn't we want lot-by-lot, right? Why wouldn't we want development? Why wouldn't we want ratables? And why wouldn't we want to work to get off transitional aid? We don't lose anything in lot-by-lot. We gain. We... Whatever I-STAR may or may not have to lose with lot-by-lot, I don't know whether it's control. I don't know what it is. We have nothing to lose by lot-by-lot.
Has he given you a list of those things that he wants in exchange for agreeing to lot-by-lot? Has that been made available in public? He just doesn't agree.
So if we're going to keep doing this entire amendment process and agree on everything, then you're stuck with us also fighting out Bradley Cove. Or whatever. Or heights, or fighting, or design standards. And our point to Brian has always been, take out lot-by-lot since you say you agree. We clearly agree. And then we'll go back to fighting Bradley Cove, design standards, height, and everything else that we need to fight out.
What did the city manager mean tonight when he said that, when he spoke with Brian? Brian said he's open to lot-by-lot separate from this whole bigger Bradley Cove.
Well, that's news to me.
I didn't say that.
Isn't that what you said? You said...
I said, when I talked to Brian about canceling the meeting, I said, there's other issues that we can address. We should still meet. We can address lot-by-lot. We can address uses, circulation. The meeting was canceled. He didn't like language that was in our draft plan. The draft plan, which is deliberative, which makes it exempt under Oprah. That's how it fits. So I tried. We said, let's do this. He still canceled the meeting. We had the meeting yesterday. And I can tell you, the first thing that was brought up for the negotiations was how to get lot-by-lot done. For us, as the deputy mayor said, it helps us. But as you said, shooting fish in a barrel. They have the monopoly on it. Why would they want to give it up? So it's a discussion. It's going to take time. But this is the first time in a couple of years that everyone has sat down. He canceled it. We sat down yesterday. Yesterday, we sat down. There is a plan in place to get these things done. There's been tasks assigned to staff, both sides. His staff and our staff. We're working on it. It's not easy. It's frustrating for everyone involved, especially the property owners, more so than the property owners because you guys are paying taxes on stuff you can't do. We want you to be able to invest.
We're not your problem on this, Peter. It's Brian.
And again, there's some problems out there. They may be up here, some of the problems. So, but this problem is like down here, the low hanging fruit. He said it. He said it in '14. He said it in '15. Pat has a meeting once a year, invites him, and says, I'm for lot-by-lot. It was July 25th of 2015, July 30th of 2016. We're sitting up here, and nobody's saying, we will not sign off tonight. So I don't know what else you want us to do except like, you know, I'll sign it in blood if he wants me to prick my finger and sign it in blood. But until he signs off, we're being held hostage like you're being held hostage. And we agree with you. But to set the record straight, we agree with you. We're for lot-by-lot. We have been since 2014. Pat referred to 2013. Nobody up here was sitting up here in 2013. So since 2014, we're in total agreement, and we're for lot-by-lot. And so the ball is in his court. And we hope you and the others will take that message back to him.
I hope everyone takes the message back to him. I hope everyone takes the message back to him, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Peter. Yes, Jill.
Good evening. Sheila Brazil, well, me personally, listening to this conversation, I think y'all need to kick Brian to the curb and find somebody else. But I'm here to talk about, I guess, something that's better, in special, the summer recreation you have this summer. It was excellent programs, kids, it benefited our kids. I think I recruited about maybe ten kids that didn't come last year. So hopefully, you'll keep putting money into this, into the activities, more activities for the kids after they get our summer rec. Because you get out the first week of August, and there's still like, three more weeks before school start. So they need something else to continue. Last year you had to track, but this year you don't have it, so hopefully, like, programs like that where they could continue to, um, you know, keep busy. So, thanks again, and hopefully, we'll put more money into it next year for more activities.
Well, let me just say this, last, yesterday, we had a recreation meeting, and that was one of the main topics that we talked about. Increasing the recreation throughout, uh, the year, so that's something that we're working on now.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and there's a lot of problems to that, part of the problems are the staff. A majority of the staff are school employees, where they work all year, and they go right into recreation, and they want like, two weeks off before they go back to school. So, it's staffing, but it, like Jesse said, it was addressed yesterday, and something we're definitely looking into.
Okay, well, maybe y'all need to like, recruit some of the like, high school students? Because I know, I'm telling my age, but that's all right, I still look good. But, when I was in, you know, when I was in, in the eighties, we had JTPA. So, I was able to work, you know, had, you get your work permit and all that, so maybe you can do that? Like, for the, because there's not really a lot of jobs for, in the summertime, for the juniors, the seniors, even the sophomores. Like sixteen, seventeen, eighteen year old students, or maybe you could look into that and hire some of them for that time, you know, when, for the, when the district staff.
It was our best year for recreation, Jesse did a great job.
Okay.
We, we have to have staff members in charge of students, we just can't hire a bunch of students.
I know, but I'm saying, but.
So, again, we are, we, we understand the problem, we are looking into it.
Well, I volunteer, call me. You can walk down the street to my house.
I'm going to knock on your door. Thank you, Jill.
Good evening, city council members and mayor. Um, my name is Nina Summerlin, and I'm just here to clear the record, because I have been hearing throughout the community, um, the last three or four events that our group has done, that we're no longer in existence. Yes, we are here, Westside Citizens United is still in Asbury, we're still functioning, and we're here to do the job that we originally signed up to do. So, if any of the members need clarification in regards to what we're doing, or if we're still here, we're still here. And I've met with Michael a few times, so I'm pretty sure Michael knows that we exist, um, and I met with some of the city council members. So if anybody has any issues and want to know what's going on at Westside Citizens United, I'm an open book. I don't have a problem answering any of those questions, so I don't have to hear within the community, we no longer exist. And like I said at the last city council meeting, I did not waste seven hundred dollars of our money to can, become a nonprofit for us to no longer exist, but we are still here in Asbury. Thank you.
Don't you have like, monthly meetings up to the?
Yes, we do. Well, we're not allowed to meet in the city anymore, so we had to go to the Westside Community Center. So we've actually meet over there once a month.
Why can't they meet in the city anymore?
Because we were, I believe it was because we were sponsoring, or part sponsoring, and they would have to pay the, the fee to stay here, as everyone else does, to, to rent one of the rooms. There's no exemptions in the ordinance that allows for, for people to, organizations to use City Hall.
Okay, let's look into that.
Okay, thank you.
That's a new one on me, thank you.
Lori Ross, Westside Community Center, one fifteen DeWitt Avenue, and I'm here in support of the Westside Citizens United. That was a group that I worked with over fifteen years ago, when they started doing a number of events for the city, and they are at the Westside Community Center. And like Ms. Nina, we have the same challenge, people want to forget that we're in existence, where most of our challenges have actually been with the city. And Mayor Moore, to your point, you didn't know, there's a lot of things that continue to go on that you don't know about. Um, particularly, I talked about it at the last city council meeting, regarding your community development block grant, technical assistance grant meeting, and questions were not allowed. I actually reviewed the application, and I will tell you that the last applications were six pages, this is seventeen pages. Let me ask the member of council, do you know what a quadrangle map is? Okay, so that can wait, but that's part and parcel to the nonsense. Bergen County has a six-page application. I believe that it was purposely done to circumvent the desires of the council, to make challenges for organizations so that they cannot apply. I cannot believe that twenty per, and I'm glad you're back Deputy Mayor Quinn, because you're in the committee, as well as Susan Maynard. And that's something else that I've talked to the council about, at least a couple of members, and I'd like to talk about that as well. You know, when you have a committee, you know, I don't know if the sunshine law applies, but if they're making decisions that impact folks, then the public should be there, because as part of your application, that committee will review the applications and take the highest graded applications, and then refer only those to the council, so the council may not know who's actually applying. But again, shocked and disgusted that there's, um, some points given for SHPO, which is the State Historic Preservation Office results, about environmental assessments. Um, so if none of those apply to you, you could theoretically be already down twenty points. Like I said, I don't know why you went from a six-page application to a seventeen-page application in Bergen County, which issues millions of dollars of CDBG grants and funds and programming, six pages. So we are requesting both the Westside Citizens United, certainly the Westside Community Center, a meeting with the council. I knew at one point, I know at one point that was offered to meet in a closed executive session, because we want to partner, okay? There are some issues on the west side that we all know about, and I said at the last meeting, we want to be included. We're all trying to work together. It's going to be continued collaboration, but we have to include everybody. New, old, struggling, vibrant, in this mosaic of a community, and we would really like to have a meeting with the council and the city manager. And, and your application is due, I guess now it's the nineteenth, and there was still no technical assistance meeting for us to ask very salient questions.
When is the application due?
Nineteenth, is that? Nineteenth.
Of August? Okay.
This is for capital improvements, right?
Yes.
I, I don't think, and Fred corrected, I don't think we could meet with the entire council in closed exec quickly, under what statute?
You wouldn't be able to have the entire council meet with them, but you could have a subcommittee.
Right, so if you want to set up a meeting with the city manager and two council people, set it up, and I'll be there, and whoever else wants to attend.
I mean, I could be there, because the application, you just have to work with me with work, Lori, because, you know, before, yeah, before nine or after five.
It would definitely be after, after five, but again, your application is due, and it's for anybody, any opportunity to ask questions. And that's unfortunate, because that's not how the Hudson is supposed to play out, but it's equal opportunity for everybody. Not some group, I think, for environmental assessment, really.
Okay, so, get, get in touch with Michael, set the meeting, and it will happen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, Joe Grillo, five twenty-one Cookman Avenue. First of all, I wanted to thank Councilwoman Kendall and Councilwoman Clayton for coming to the fundraiser yesterday. It was a really great event, and it was great to see, uh, some of the council people there. This was actually put, uh, put in my hands by, by Pat, uh, and I was reading it, and it actually piqued my curiosity, this one, this one part of this, the article of the redevelopment plan from, uh, or redevelopers agreement from, uh, twenty oh two. Basically says that if one of the parties believes that the other party, uh, has acted unreasonably in denying certain consent, then, uh, that party could submit the dispute to binding arbitration, as defined in Article seventeen. So I was wondering if that could be used as leverage with, you know, what, what, Amy, what you've been saying about Brian saying he's for lot by lot and then not. I mean, I was, I was at the, the homeowners association meeting, standing right, sitting right next to, to John and Eileen, and even afterwards with, with Councilwoman Clayton, he said, I'm for lot by lot, uh, for, for lot by lot, uh, development. So, um, I mean, he's on tape now, and if he does all of a sudden say something. Right, twice, but I'm saying, instead of waiting and waiting and waiting and seeing if he's going to say, say something differently, I mean, if, if, if he, if you meet down, sit down with him like you did yesterday, and all of a sudden he's not for it, um, can't, can't you just get an arbitrator to, to, uh, to hash it out? And I yield the rest of my time, so, thanks.
I don't know the answer, all I know is the last time the city took I Star to arbitration was like in two thousand and eleven, and the city said, we got them right where we want them, and the city got their asses kicked to the tune of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in capital out there, and five hundred thousand dollars they bonded for, and they, they got, the city got the raw end of the deal. So, I mean, I, I, I think it's definitely a question that should be looked into, and go from there, but. Carl, if you want to handle it?
Or if you want to think about it and do some research before you answer that.
Right, but i- if we're looking for leverage, and that's a point of leverage, then it's, it's, it's worth looking into.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hi, Green and Miranda, Eighth Avenue. I guess one of my properties is still vacant, uh, since two thousand and seven. And I also was paying, I have one of the smaller properties when they took it away from me, and I was paying ten thousand dollars. Now it's nine years later, you lost the ninety, there were other people paying sixty-five thousand taxes, you lost all that. Then it was right in back of the winter bar, they were paying forty-five thousand, you lost all that. Now, something has to be done, it's too late for me, but like these other people, I think it's absolutely necessary. And it's too bad we didn't get together like they did in Long Branch. But the other thing, I see all these resolutions on here tonight. Now, was I someplace else on Monday night? I didn't hear any of these.
Everything was up on the website, which ones do you refer to?
What's the workshop about?
Ask your question, I want to answer in three minutes.
Okay, what's the workshop, workshop about? Aren't you supposed to talk about these resolutions at the workshop? I thought that's what Monday night was about.
And we did talk about many of them, go ahead. Which ones, which ones are you confused about?
And the other, what?
Which ones do you, which ones do you have no knowledge about? Since they've been up on the website since Friday, and we have.
But, but, but they're not explained on the website, they're just like they're in here. You just have a title, and it doesn't, you don't talk about it, Monday night, you didn't talk about any of this.
Monday night, there was a public session where you could have got up and asked a question, what does this mean?
Uh, well, I didn't have this piece of paper Monday night, we only got one sheet, remember?
No, but it's up on the website Friday, go ahead, what, what?
Okay, the other thing, I want, I wanted to finish my conversation, because the other night I only had three minutes, about the, the bridge. In, in the bids, which FEMA didn't, I, I found out that FEMA did not approve, was that you had to build, you had to have two builders that built million dollar bridges in five years. That bid was, that shouldn't have even been in the bid, that's why Henry didn't bid, because you never changed the bid. And he couldn't live up to that obligation, because he didn't build a bridge in five years, but he did build bridges. So, that was the one thing you didn't talk about, John. You, you said he didn't bid, but you didn't explain why he didn't bid, and that was the reason why, because you never changed the bid. Then you find out that FEMA didn't require that in the bid. So, T and M, I mean, I've been here so long, you're like recycled people who work for you. T and M, they put that in the bid, and to me, it looks like they were looking for somebody they wanted to build a bridge. It's not even a bridge, it's a footbridge, it's a glorified dock. And, and to think that it's going to cost over a million dollars is outrageous. You really shouldn't vote on that tonight. I know that's one of them, I think, I didn't look at it closely, but, so, isn't that the truth, that you didn't take it out of the bid?
Henry requested that we.
A two-week extension, I know.
A two-week extension.
Which we all said yes to.
Which we did not have to do, but since Henry is a great Asbury Park.
Cheerleader.
Cheerleader, and given much to the city, then we said yes, because it wasn't going out until after Labor Day. But no, I mean, we, we cannot change bids, because somebody can't meet, meet specifications. We could delay the bidding, so he could partner up with somebody else, he couldn't partner up with somebody else, but we, we cannot change bids, once they go out to bid. If, if, if we went out for a candy store, and we put in the bid X, Y, and Z, and you said, hey, John, do me a favor, knock out Y and Z, and we did that, you and I'd be going to jail, I mean, we, we cannot change bids once they go out.
Yeah, but those bids were wrong.
According to you and Henry.
Well, everybody knows what a footbridge is, right? It's not the George Washington Bridge, is it? That's going over Sunset Lake, I would have rather seen the money spent on cleaning up the damn lake.
Well, ninety percent of that money is reimbursable by FEMA, so just so everyone understands, we're not spending over a million dollars on a footbridge, right?
I know, that's a politic, that's a very political statement, Amy, that's very political. That's very political, because it's still taxpayers' money.
And, and that you did ask on Monday, and I said to the, answered it as, if it costs a million dollars, and we're hoping it comes in under cost, so a million dollars, ninety percent, we're getting back nine hundred thousand dollars, so it's costing a hundred thousand dollars. It would cost a lot more, and we've got costs to take it down and rip it out. So we could spend two hundred thousand dollars to rip it out and have nothing, or spend a hundred thousand dollars to have a brand-new footbridge with benches, with lights, with railings, where people can go across, go fishing, et cetera, and be it the way it was before Sandy, and before, you know, the way it was when you remember Asbury Park, when I remember Asbury Park, when I was in, had our senior class picture taken on that footbridge. But right now, I mean, it's been closed well before Sandy, so it was like a million dollars to rebuild it, or two hundred, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars to rebuild it, or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to knock it down. So I thought the right answer was, spend a hundred thousand dollars to rebuild it.
And while you want to look at those engineers, their bidding process.
Jerry?
Hello, Mayor and Council, Jerry Scrannell, thank you for your explanation, John. Before the lawyers go looking at the website about the redevelopment plan, they got to make sure it's the correct one that posted, because I remember years ago when we looked it up and used it as the bible, we were told it was the wrong one posted. Okay, years ago, I asked Terry Reedy to provide us with a timeline for the redevelopment plan. I really think we need a timeline to hold people accountable, because fifteen years gone by, and we're still fighting on getting places, the redevelopment in full swing. It's a lot better now than it was fifteen years ago, but we could have most of the stuff done, and at the rate they're going at fifteen years, it won't be completed by the thirty-year mark. Okay, um, now, you guys been here nearly a year, and I'd still like to know what your goals are for this year or next year, because the reason you have to have your goals, is you have to set goals for the city manager to follow. Because you guys, some of you are running for reelection, and you are nice people, but there are going to be other nice people running that will have a plan. But you're in a position to say, this is what we have, and this is what we did, and I'd really like to help you out, just show us on paper what you did. The other thing is, nearly a year's gone by, what about the goals of the department heads in the city? What are their goals to, to cut back, so you guys don't have to raise taxes next year? Because that's a good thing to say, we have a plan, and this is what's been done so far. And that's basically it, I just would like to see some, a timetable or a timeline on the redevelopment, what has happened and what the future is. The other thing is, you can't go blaming the city manager, he didn't complete any task, if he doesn't know what task to do. It's like when I taught my dog tricks, he knew where my hand went, that's what he had to follow. We don't know what's going on here.
Did you just compare me to your dog?
I had to break it down simple, because one, everybody understands.
Jerry, sit down.
I, I, I think several, several months ago.
Jerry is no more subtle.
We did give the state of the city what, what has been accomplished, where we're going forward, so I think that has been done. In the last tax bill, there was a frequently asked questions, because being a city on transitional aid, and not known if we're going to get the one point two million dollars we're guaranteed by the governor, and now he put in an executive order of two oh nine, freezing the money. Uh, so we're, we're going on estimated third quarter tax bills. So we've put out a frequently asked question brochure, which I think did work very well, and in there, again, is another trifold as far as like, what's going on in the city and what the goals are, so I think that has been, we, we can update that. Okay, thank you, Jerry.
Hi, I'm Tara Weldon, I own Hot Mess at six fifty-one Cookman Avenue. Wow, there is a lot of heavy stuff going on here tonight, and I just want to talk about resolution number three forty-eight, and I know I already told my Easter bonnet story on Monday, so I'm just going to kind of keep it short tonight. Um, I wanted to talk about something that I kind of touched on, on Monday, and I feel like it's an important point to bring up. Um, part of my business is, is weddings, it's actually a huge part of my business, so I've done, um, twenty-two weddings to date this year, we have thirty from Saturday until the end of the year. So if you consider that's fifty weddings, and there's approximately ten people that come in to get their hair and makeup done, um, that's around five hundred people that are coming to our city that might not have been here otherwise. And, you know, possibly even more than that, um, as my business grows, which I hope it does, and I plan for that. Um, so I wanted to kind of break the myth and, and say that, you know, I'm not just a hairdresser, that I consider myself an artist, I create art every day, my medium is hair. And, um, I'm a member of the Downtown Merchants Association, I have a lot of support from members in the community, I'm also a member of the Chamber of Commerce. Um, my good friend Jackie's here, the executive director, and I know tonight's her last night, so I, I love her, and I'm so happy that she's been a part of my life and, and a support system in my business. Um, and I, I guess that's pretty much it, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, everybody kind of got to hear that it was more than just, you know, color and cuts, that it was creating an experience for men and women, and, and doing something really special for our community. And that's it, thank you.
Stick around and you should be happy.
Move it. Moving on. Next is minutes, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen workshop, July twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen executive session, and July twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen regular session. Have a motion to pass the minutes?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? We'll move on to consent agendas, we have four items on the consent agenda this evening. Resolution two thousand and sixteen, three thirty-four, approving special events wedding application. Do you want me to finish with consent?
Just finish this one.
Resolution authorizing payment, a payroll in amount of one million thirty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-three cents. Resolution two thousand and sixteen, third, three thirty-six, resolution to credit sewer account one.
Resolution to credit sewer account 11308 Langford Street. And resolution 2016-337. Resolution to credit sewer account 508 Fourth Avenue. Have a motion to approve those four resolutions? Do I have a second? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore? Have a motion to reopen public session?
Move it.
For one gentleman, yes.
Okay.
Second.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Curtis Barnes, 2056 Avenue in Neptune, New Jersey. I don't know. Maybe I was misunderstood when I came here a couple of weeks ago. I am actually in Coral Harbor right now. I talked to her when it was the other day, and, you know, she misunderstood me when I said I was actually homeless. I went there homeless. But I'm still in this rehab. And knowing my age there, I don't want to be there. I want to actually find an apartment, handicap accessible apartment. I've been looking and looking. And like I said before, as if I'm not fifty-two years of age or no veteran, I'm not getting no help, you know? And they're putting people on the waiting list. I've been on the waiting lists. I've been here, what, two years, you know, waiting to get into a place. And it's just ridiculous. And I'm trying to find help. I don't know what to do. I'm trying to, you know, seek out any type of help that I can get. All I do is... I mean, all I get is social security as far as for housing. I went on the... what is the list? The list that was in Long Branch? One of the two lists is in Long Branch that was public housing. And, you know, I guess that's the only place I'm able to get into. The waiting list is just super long. And I'm sitting in Coral Harbor. I guess she said I can't get into her program because I'm not homeless. I'm not considered homeless being in Coral Harbor. So, I'm trying to figure out a solution to this problem. And I'm asking for help. Is that possible?
I'm sorry. I missed the first part of what happened. I know that our social worker Doug has reached out to you. Have you talked to him?
Which one is Doug?
Social worker, tall guy, about six-two, six-three. Grayish hair.
While he actually reached out to me, one of his guys reached out to me. They... what he was telling me was... I've dealt with them already. So, this was years ago, maybe a year and a half ago. So, I've been on the waiting list there also. It's just the same thing. So, I'm trying to figure out, like, what am I supposed to do? Like, it's... even having money, you still can't get into a handicap accessible place. It's hard. And it's... I'm trying to figure out, like, what am I... where am I supposed to go with this?
That I understand. I gave your number to Doug, and I know he called you when he came back. You were here on a Wednesday. He came back from vacation on Monday. He reached out to you. The last thing that he had told me was that you needed to sign a form that he can access your information.
I talked to one of his guys. And maybe that's the form that I signed for social services. Social services, they called me, and I signed the form. And I don't know if that was Doug, because it was a lady. I don't know if that was one of his secretaries or not. I have no idea. But I'm still waiting. And then when I spoke to her, she said I can't get into her program because I'm not considered homeless being in Coral Harbor.
If you have a copy of that form, fax it to us. Get it to us so our social services department can start working and help you as much as we can. We need the release.
Okay. So, you can give me your information, your information, so I can, I guess, fax it to you all from Coral Harbor?
Yes, sure.
Can we put him in touch with Senator Beck, Assemblyperson Dowling, and Assemblyperson Downing?
Yes.
Okay. Because obviously, like you said, you tried Long Branch, you tried Neptune. So, they're the state legislators that are in charge of the entire area. So, maybe they can help us better than we can help you.
All right. Thanks a lot. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Motion to close? Okay, we'll move on to individual resolutions. The first one is Resolution 2016-338. Resolution authorizing the payment of bills in the amount of $2,130,863.78. At the request of Mayor Moore, he wishes to have the following purchase orders pulled from the bill list. Purchase order 16-02378, 1600360, and 1602352. Does anybody have any objections pulling those bills?
No objections.
Mayor Moore would also like to abstain from line item 601232200009. Have a motion to pay the bills?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
With your exception. Yep. Resolution 2016-339. Resolution amending the temporary appropriations for 2016. Have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-340. Resolution canceling balances and completed general capital improvement authorizations. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-341. Resolution delegating authority determined the form and other details of not to exceed $6,450,000 aggregate principal amount of general obligation funding bond series 2016 of the City of Asbury Park and the County of Monmouth State of New Jersey in providing for the sale of such bonds to the Monmouth County Improvement Authority pursuant to the 2016 governmental loan refunding program. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-342. Corrective action plan for the 2015 municipal audit. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-343. Resolution awarding professional services contract to BRS Associates, Millennium Strategy, and T and M Associates in a total amount not to exceed $20,000 for on-call grant writing and management services. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-344. Authorizing the award of replacement Sunset Avenue footbridge. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-345. Authorizing project management and construction coordination and inspection services to T and M Associates for Sunset Avenue footbridge project. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Staying.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Motion passes. Resolution 2016-346. Authorizing the award of the general generator at sewage treatment plant bay. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Council... Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-347. Authorizing change order number one, a contract extension for the asphalt diffuser project. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2016-348. Resolution of the mayor of city council of the City of Asbury Park referring proposed amendments to the central business district redevelopment plan to the City of Asbury Park Planning Board and directing the planning board to take certain actions pursuant to NJSA 48, call 12A-7E.
Can I ask a question? Do we have to wait?
You have to do your motion first.
I'm going to move forward.
Move it.
But I would suggest... I think Councilwoman Quinn was going to clarify how this was going to be moved forward.
I was, thanks, Fred. Oh, or...
No, I just wanted to...
It's fine. It's already been moved and seconded, so it can always be amended. So, the motion or the resolution as it was drafted is now on the table.
Okay. I move to amend and move the motion with exhibit A, C, D, and F forward, holding off on B. See, we did it wrong. Because if I had just moved it, I would have moved forward my three that I wanted.
Well, that was my question.
The four.
We're voting individually on it, correct?
Fred, it wasn't moved yet.
It was.
Yeah, it was.
So, I move forward exhibit A, C, D, and F.
So, the motion to amend what's before the council is to adopt Resolution 2016-348, but limit it only to the matters that are referenced in Exhibits A, C, D, and F.
Correct.
And hold for future consideration the other matters which were set forth in Exhibits B, E, and G.
Okay. Eileen, you have the same letters?
I had to say... That was my question, that we could individually go through each of these and table any that we felt we needed to spend more time on, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, there's a motion, then, to amend to only include Exhibits A, C, D, and F. That motion's on the table. It needs a second.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
So, now it's before the council is the resolution that includes Exhibits A, C, D, and F. Is there any further discussion as to the resolution in that format? Otherwise, it can now be voted upon and adopted.
Okay. So, we need to move it again?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to Resolution 2016-349. Resolution pertaining to memorandum of agreement with New Jersey Office of Emergency Management as the sponsoring agency of New Jersey Task Force One. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Yes.
What's your comment or question?
I'm sorry. I was just trying to move it along.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton? Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-350. Resolution approving a joint purchasing agreement for fit testing equipment with the borough deal. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-351. Resolution requesting New Jersey Transit to continue the late-night train service between New York City and the City of Asbury Park. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Go ahead.
Since this is an add-on, and wasn't on the table on Monday, and wasn't on the website for reading the read on Friday, somebody explain in thirty seconds.
It's a resolution asking New Jersey Transit to keep the late-night train, which I think is three o'clock, as they are proposing canceling that service.
So, we're asking for the trains to keep on running year-round, late trains, not just in the summer time.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-352. Resolution authorizing the disposition of surplus property. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
Could somebody please, since this is an add-on, could somebody just please explain this?
We have a bunch of old and broken stuff that we don't need anymore, and we're going to try to sell it.
Not the employees. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-353. Resolution entering into an agreement with Asbury Partners, commonly referred to as I-Star for the wastewater treatment plant... Or wastewater treatment study. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Yes. This was something we wanted to move forward under the caveat that the council would be sent the letter. We had this... Okay. Do I need to amend anything to move it forward that way? Okay. Are you sure? I don't need to amend anything, Carl?
It's up to the council. The way it's written right now is Mike is giving the authority to enter the...
Not prior to us agreeing on the letter.
If you want to amend it just to indicate that, you know, we will obtain consensus from the council
before executing it, we can make a verbal amendment.
Okay.
What did we do with that last sentence? Which last sentence? I don't know. I have it in front of me. The last sentence that I have problems with.
Well, we haven't seen the letter.
Okay. So we're still going to follow on this if we haven't seen it?
I thought, can we just do it the way Carl said, which is we'll pass the resolution provided you get consensus from the council on the letter? Yeah, that takes care of everything.
Any further comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
I'm abstaining. I don't understand it, Rick, just yet.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2016-354. Resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Asbury Park acting as a redevelopment entity regarding the application of Madison Asbury Retail LLC for a conceptual review of the Fifth Avenue Pavilion proposal for the bandshell and other uses on the roof on Block 4502, Lot 1.16. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Okay, go ahead. I know we had discussed it before. Go ahead, you do it.
Sure. So previously, the council had reviewed and given conceptual approval for Madison Marquette to do a renovation to the roof of the Fifth Avenue Pavilion, partially known as the Pryor Bandshell, Pryor, P-R-Y-O-R. Bandshell and to proceed to the zoning, planning board for required planning approvals, one of the conditions the council placed on their approval was an agreement with Madison regarding certain public events to be held at the Pryor Bandshell. That has been submitted to the council and approved, and so we're just adopting a resolution memorializing they have satisfied that condition.
Any other comments? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay, we're on to ordinances introduction. We have ordinance 2016-35. Capital ordinance appropriating the sum of $87,000 for acquisition of various capital items and park improvements. Have a motion to introduce ordinance 2016-35?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for September 14, 2016. Next is ordinance 2016-36. An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter III police regulations by adding Section 3-4, urinating and defecating in public of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for September 14, 2016. Ordinance 2016-37. An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter VII Traffic subsection 7-41 metered parking of the revised general ordinances of the City of Asbury Park. Have a motion to introduce this ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for September 14, 2016. Next is ordinance 2016-38. Establishing a restricted parking space for use by handicap persons at property located at Ford D.L.A. Court in the City of Asbury Park, amending and supplementing 7-36 entitled Handicap Parking, a Chapter VII traffic of the revised general ordinances of the City of Asbury Park. Have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing is scheduled for September 14, 2016. We'll move on to public hearing. The first is ordinance 2016-32. Bond ordinance amending and supplementing bond ordinance number 3036, which provides for the reconstruction of the footbridge of Sunset Lake, here to fore, finally adopted by the City of Council of the City of Asbury Park